And most of all, we have our beautiful children. As we conduct our business tonight, please give us the wisdom to make good decisions that would benefit our children.
Thank you, Sam. I'd like to recognize Sam Fluellen and ask him to come and lead us in the pledge of allegiance. Sam is the son of Jessica Fountain and Ed Fluellen. Welcome, Sam.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Sam.
Good job, Sam.
Board members, you've had an opportunity to review tonight's agenda. Is there a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
Motion.
Is there a second? Motion on the second. Is there any discussion? Those in favor of approving the agenda, please say yea.
Yea.
Any opposed, say no. And the motion carries. At this time, we will do our honors and recognitions, and I will call Dr. Jennifer Heffner for presentations.
Thank you. Board member Hardest, will you come and assist me, please? It is my pleasure to present the honors and recognition portion of the board meeting each month. Tonight, we recognize two governor's school nominees. The Governor's School of North Carolina is a five-and-one-half week summer residential program for intellectually gifted high school students, integrating academic disciplines, the arts, and unique courses on each of two campuses. The curriculum focuses on the exploration of the most recent ideas and concepts in each discipline and does not involve credit, tests, or grades. The Governor's School is the oldest statewide summer residential program for academically or intellectually gifted high school students in the nation. The program, which is open to rising seniors only, with the exceptions made for rising juniors in selected performing and visual arts areas, is located on two campuses of up to 325 students each. Governor's School West at Salem College in Winston-Salem, and that school began in 1963, and Governor's School East at Meredith College in Raleigh, that school began in 1978. The program is administered by the Public Schools of North Carolina, the State Board of Education, and the Department of Public Instruction through the Exceptional Children's Division. A board of governors appointed by the State Board of Education acts as an advisory body. The first student we recognize tonight is Kylie Brown. Kylie was selected to attend the 2017 session of North Carolina Governor's School East in the area of Natural Science. She will be on the campus of Meredith College. Kylie is the daughter of Steve and Ginger Brown of the Bethlehem Community. I had the pleasure of serving as Kylie's elementary school principal, and I have thoroughly enjoyed watching her grow and excel in a variety of academic opportunities over the years. Congratulations, Kylie. And, boy, could that girl read 100 books every summer. Oh, she was a reader. The next student that we will recognize tonight is Avery Bishop. Avery was selected to attend the 2017 session of North Carolina Governor's School West in the area of Natural Science. He will be on the campus of Salem College. Avery is the son of Mark and Kim Bishop of the Bethlehem Community. And is that correct? Is it Bethlehem? Okay. I knew it was Bethlehem or Wittenburg, but good. I want to say congratulations to you, Avery. I've had the honor of knowing your mother since we rode the school bus together many, many, many years ago. Kim Hatton Bishop, and she's very smart, too, and she brags about you an awful lot, and you are most deserving of this award. Congratulations. Sure.
At this time, if anybody wants to slip out, now would be a good time. If you want to leave, you're welcome, or welcome to stay.
Thank you. Good to see you.
Okay, our next item on the agenda is our public comment, and I think we have one person commenting tonight, so I will read the procedures. Then, Amy Hopkey, you can come up. Each person signed up to speak will have three minutes to make his or her comments. Each person signed up to speak will only be entitled to the time allotted for them. The time may not be to any other speaker. Only one spokesperson will be allowed to speak for a group or individuals wishing to address the board on the same issue. Speakers will be acknowledged by the board chair in the order in which the name appears on the sheet. Speakers will address the board from the front of the room and begin their comments by stating their name. Comments that are deemed are obscure, profane, or personal attacks on a board member or school employee will cause for the ending of a particular speaker's time, determined by the board chair. Such comments by any individual shall terminate the person's privilege to address the board. The public comment to the board period is not intended to require the board to answer any questions. Speakers will address all comments to the board as a whole and not any individual member of the board. Discussions between speakers and members of the audience will not be allowed. Speakers will refrain from discussion of any of the following items, such as which are closed-session materials, including, not limited to, attorney-client privileges, property accusations or limitations, comments about specific employees or students in open session. This is in accordance to Law 115(c) 321 and Open Meeting Law that protects students and employee records. Speakers will be courteous with their language and presentations. Amy, you're welcome to start.
Good evening. It's Amy Hopkey, awesome time. Thank you. I come to you tonight as an advocate for the EC students, the students, parents, Taylorsville staff. Since the release of the study, it was my hope that you, as a board, have kept an open mind and have a plan in place that will meet the needs of all students in Alexander County. I was happy with the dialogue between the board members, Sugarloaf staff, and parents. However, I am disappointed that the dialogue has yet to occur between the board members, staff, and parents of Taylorsville Elementary. From this point forward, it is my hope that the stakeholders at both Sugarloaf and Taylorsville are treated with the same respect and transparency. As you all know, my main concern is for the EC children, and their needs are, and their needs. They need repetitious, they need consistency, and with that, they need to be able to be settled in what they are doing. We are getting ready to go through a second year of this stressful situation, which is both physical and mental to them, not to mention the other students. Our EC students need you to choose them and keep the schools open. The last thing they need is long bus rides or sitting around waiting on what to do, and regardless of how you all feel, unless you have a child in that situation, you don't understand that they need to know and they need to feel safe. Changing everything around and having them hear, or they are hearing, parents talk about what they're going to do to their school is very stressful and unacceptable. Do you really want to know, as the board who will close down one of the schools, we need to build Alexander County up and keep both schools open? If you really need money, we can, we need to look at the low, the low, I can't even read it, the alcohol tax, and better yet, making, maybe making some cuts at the county office. We say we are AC, so let's be AC and figure out what's good for all students, parents, and staff. As I close, I want to, I want everyone to remember that this is for our children. Remember, this happened last year during testing, and we do not need this stressful and neglected situation to happen again. It is not their fault.
Thank you. Board members, you've had an opportunity to review the consent agenda. What's the pleasure of the board?
Moved approved.
Second. All those in favor of approving the agenda, please say yea.
Yea.
Any no? Motion carries. Now, we'll go to reports, and we'll start off with Taylorsville Elementary and Ms. Jamelle Engel, principal at Taylorsville.
When you gave them a chance to slip out, they stayed, so that's good. Am I in control of the clicker? Okay. I hope. Dr. Heffner, thank you for allowing me to be here, and members of the board. I would just want to give you just a few brief minutes of an update on what's been happening at Taylorsville Elementary during the 1617 school year. After being named principal in July, we hit the ground running, and there were over, including myself, 12 new staff members to welcome students in August. And at a school our size, that's quite an impact, and the, our school has a long and rich history in this community, and, but this staff has come together and every day demonstrated an energy and excitement and determination to continue the great things that not only are happening now, but that have happened up to the point to get us where we are. You know, change is not always a bad thing, and it's been one of the best things that's ever happened to me, and I'll be quite honest with you. You know, it's, it allows us to empower ourselves and to push ourselves and to take you places that you've never been before, and I'm just so thankful to be a part of what's happening right now. I'm not going to spend a whole lot of time, y'all have seen the numbers, you know the performance that this staff gets out of children. And, you know, last year was remarkable in that they exceeded growth, and, and the numbers speak for themselves. But the next question for me was, what's next? How do we continue to build on that? And, and a lot of the conversation that has happened at Taylorsville Elementary this year has surrounded the term "the push." Kelly Teese, our instructional facilitator, opened up at the beginning of the year with a short video clip of an eagle and pushing its, its babies out of the nest. You know, we've climbed that mountain, and we have gotten the grades, and we've gotten scores, and, and we've proven that we can do great things, but what's next? And so, part of my job coming in as principal of this school was to rally this new staff and, and the existing leadership that was there, and build a team that's willing to reach out to this community and build partnerships. We're going, we spend time with students every day, and I have pledged from day one to be in that building and be in those classrooms and be with those students. I probably won't be able to walk tomorrow because I played dodgeball for an hour and a half this afternoon with kids for their PBIS rewards, and I hadn't done that in a really long time, and I got pounded more than anybody, so, but it was great, and it builds those relationships. We have leader, not just a leadership team, but leadership teams plural throughout our building, through grade level PLCs, student services teams, our leadership team, administrative and office team, has been very powerful in meeting the needs of students where they are. We have continual conversations about data and about processes and direction of how do we fill in the holes. I think I've heard Swiss cheese and scaffolding and filling the holes every day in one point or another through our SST. We sit down and we talk about kids, and we try and figure out why it's not working, and why are they falling behind, and if it's not, let's change it and ask why, and, and we do that consistently, not just in third grade or fourth grade, but throughout the building, and that is powerful. Some of the new priorities during this push has been to be very intentional and explicit and meaningful in what we're doing every day. If it's, if it's not intentional, an example that I use is that we have made it an intentional habit to have children answer us back in a complete sentence throughout the course of the day, regardless of what the question is asked, and, and because of doing that, that will transition, we hope, into their writing. If they can think it, they can write it, and if they can speak it, they can write it. And so, we are very focused and, and, and willing to demand that from them. Increasing rigor and text complexity and building on the domains of literacy, we have worked on vocabulary, some other intentional practices. We have a seven-minute challenge where every student is reading at least seven additional minutes, and the amount of vocabulary that they are exposed to through that process is just unbelievable, and we're hoping that that will transition into better success on those EOGs. Data meetings, you know, in PLCs, speaking, mentioned that, we're in the one-to-one pilot will be, you know, full-blown next year, thanks to you guys and the support of the technology. And the PD, I'm going to tell y'all something. I thought I worked hard at ACHS, but I have never been around such a hard-working group of professionals as these people right here. They are there every day, they stay late, they're, they're on the weekends, it is amazing. And they have PD, and they teach each other just some of the things, either through PLC or through after-school silent fluency, building stamina in reading, having positive growth mindsets, vocabulary development, English second language learner strategies that help all readers, are just some of the things that they have taught each other and taught me throughout the course of the year. They're in it, y'all, and community programs, this is just a couple pictures. We, we have reading partners, lunch buddies, our pets, our parent-teacher organization, faith community, you know, we welcome all kinds of folks into our building, but in turn, our children, we want to have them back out in the community, give them back. And just this past weekend, I had a tremendous outpouring of staff from Taylorsville and kids participate in Robin's Run, which is a great community event that goes right back to sort of the children of this, of this county. You know, it's, it's been very, I've said this a lot, that I feel like I've been drinking from a fire hose a lot of the year, a lot of this year, you know, drinking out of a fire hose, but these guys have been there every step of the way, and if I've had a question, they've been patient with me, and I just want to be the kind of leader that you can be proud of, and, and I will leave you with this last slide right here. This may or may not be somewhere on the campus of Taylorsville Elementary. It says, "Janelle was here 11/1/1984," and, and then this is another picture of me on the very first day of kindergarten lunch. Now, you talk about scared. I was scared that day, but it is one of my favorite thing, one of my favorite quotes is about peace, and, and it says this, it says, "Peace, it does not mean to be in a place where there is no noise, trouble, or hard work. It means to be in the midst of those things and still be calm in your heart." And, board and Dr. Heffner, I have such a piece about Alexander County schools and about Taylorsville Elementary, and whatever direction things go, I have such a piece about it, and, and we are all servants of these children, and it's going to be okay. And just thank you for the opportunity to serve, and, and thank you for the opportunity to, to walk along these people every day because it is powerful, and, and I hope that Taylorsville Elementary will continue to be something that you can be proud of. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Board members, ask Ms. Lingle what her reaction was one Friday night when I sent her a picture of Janelle was here, and I texted it to her, and I think I took her by surprise one Friday night. She wanted to know exactly where I had been and where I had gotten that picture. I don't think they have. I don't think they have.
One question from Ms. Lingle. Yes, is Officer Knight reading on grade level?
Okay. Good job. Okay, next on our list is the digital teams and digital learning. Dr. Phil Griffin.
Mike Samper and Bowman, members of the board. Dr. Heffner, thank you for giving me the opportunity this evening to speak, to speak on our digital teams for digital learning opportunity that we have. Ms. Lingle did mention our one-to-one program that we have going on in Alexander County school system, that'd be three, five for next year, then our middle schools are one-to-one and our high school also one-to-one. A lot of incredible devices with incredible students using them, but the most important part of that is professional development that goes along with our one-to-one initiative that we have going. So, we have a team of inspired adults that have joined us in Asheville over the last several weeks, and those members of our team are myself, Amy Dawson, Kelly Teese, Jeanette Boditzer, Elisa Miller, Cheryl Triplet, Tiffany Boston, Jennifer Muscarelli, Mary Brown, and Renee Stillwell have also joined us, but those individuals have joined a team to put together hopefully some professional development for our district in terms of digital learning. We're very excited about this and the fact that not only are we there, but many of our surrounding districts have teams there as well, and it's an awesome opportunity when you're able to learn from peers from around the state of North Carolina, the western part now, and then hopefully at the end of this program, we'll come together from teams from all over the state of North Carolina. So, we're well-represented, and I'm honored to be a part of this team. The program consists of, we've had professional develop and, and vision, leadership and culture, professional learning, curriculum and instruction, technology and infrastructure, and then our last piece will be on data and assessment in June in Raleigh. So, we're putting together, again, multiple sessions with that content involved to make our, our school system better in the realm of digital learning. We had to come together and put together a mission and a vision and what we thought our program was about, and the, the first day that we were involved in this, in this program, we had to kind of develop goals, and where we wanted our plan and our team, where we wanted to reach within our district. Now, one of the first things that we came up with is our vision, is that we're here to prepare students for a world that yet exists, and that's so true, then since how many staff developments I go in technology, that our world is changing at a very, very rapid pace, so quickly that it's very difficult for us to keep up with what's taking place. Our, our teachers are challenged, we're challenged as leaders to make sure that we're, we're presenting content to our students that's going to make them successful. One of the jobs, one of the workshops that I was in at NC TIES, they were talking about this same topic, and they were talking about jobs that now exist that didn't just a couple years ago, and I mentioned this in leadership yesterday, that now some of the highest-paid individuals that are coming out are actually drone operators. I mean, who really thought that we would have professional drone operators in our world? And, and it's so true, not only in our military, but in our professional occupations as well. So, there's many things that are coming down that pipeline that we're trying to prepare our students for, and that's our challenge. Our mission is through guidance, leadership, support, and resources, that we are committed to provide rigorous, rigorous student-centered learning which meets those students' needs, and, and that's so very important. So, our team kind of, again, came together and collaborated and put these missions and visions together for our team. This talks about some of the top 10 demands that we talked about in the job world. Our goals are that we have differentiated learning, focused learning instruction, and ultimately grow both teachers and students when we pull that piece together. So, where are we? That was one of our questions. This model for managing change was one that we used within our workshop, and I thought it very, very relevant for any type of change that agent that you go through. If you'll look at this guide, and we'll start at the bottom left and then work to the right towards the top, you see missing parts from the change agent, and with just that one missing part, for instance, the first one's mission, missing the vision. Without that, you can have the skills, incentives, resources, and action plan, but you still have confusion if you have a gap there. And as you work up the scale, if you're missing skills, you have anxiety, if you're missing incentives, you have resistance, if you're missing resources, you have frustration, if you're missing that action plan to start out with, you have false starts, but when you put them all together, you have a successful plan. And ultimately, that's what we're hoping for our teachers and our resources around, that we can offer these devices and then offer great instruction for our teachers to use. I'd like to thank Amy Dawson. We have a one-person team at this point that facilitates our instruction, but she hopefully leads a lot of fine teachers, and I know I see faces in the audience here that are well-defined in digital learning, and hopefully we can be a big part of that team as we push forward. We have a North Carolina digital plan, learning plan, that is part of what we're putting together with this. We took some, we took data, we're beginning to analyze that data and see where we are, and then continue to build on what our strengths and weaknesses are with that information. Some of the data that we took, we took from the North Carolina Digital Learning Plan, a rubric that they have to follow, and each of our schools, our district filled this out, it's a district learning team. Each of our schools had the opportunity to fill this rubric out, and then we went through and we, we tabulated the information to kind of see where we are. In the bottom, you can see there that our total is actually, we have your emerging, developing, advanced, and target, and when we put all of our scores together as a total, we found ourselves at the high end of developing, which is pretty telling for where we think we are at this point. We know that we certainly started our plan, but we know we have a lot of work to get to where we want to be as a target group, so that's okay with us because it gives us certainly room for growth, but also lets us know on the, the activities and things that we need to improve upon. As part of our plan also incorporates professional development, what will begin next year with our teachers in the North Carolina Digital Learning Competencies. We've had several professional developments in this and what it means for our teachers, and we hope to begin that next year. And ultimately, what the competencies are, well, we will put together different modules for our teachers starting next year, and they will go through these modules in order to learn more about digital learning. They will begin together as a school, as a team, and then they'll be individually and self-monitored and self-paced at that point, but we have a, several modules that we're putting together for that, for each of our teachers to follow within our competencies for next year and give them information. And then finally, some of the quotes that we use within our sessions I thought were very relevant, which is sharing your best resource. very relevant, which is sharing your best resources. A teacher's best resource is another teacher. And teachers, you guys in the audience, that is so true. Your teammate, the person within your building usually is, is the strength of what you do, and you're allowing them so much. And if you want to go fast, go along. If you want to go far, put together as a team. And I'm very, very blessed with the people who work with me. And I want from, you saw Kim Bishop in there earlier, from our technicians to Amy Dawson, who does our instructional facilitation and digital learning. And couldn't get it done without them, certainly a lot of great teachers that we have. So, thank you so much for giving a little bit of your time and letting you know some of the things that we're doing in digital learning. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next is our superintendent's report. I'll recognize Dr. Jennifer Heffner.
Board members, you know the year is winding down. When I give you lots of celebration dates to add to your calendars, I'm doing just that tonight. But to help you out, I have also attached everything that I'm getting ready to tell you to tonight's agenda. So, that's what that attachment is on the agenda. The first thing that I would ask you to add to your calendar is the Alexander County School Systems of the Year Celebration. That is a very big night for us. We will be giving four very prestigious awards that night. The date is Thursday, May 4th at the auditorium. The event will begin at six with a reception to be held immediately afterwards in the ACHS cafeteria. All of you are invited to attend this celebration. And I will tell you that it means a lot to the recipients of these awards when you are there. Also, this week is National Assistant Principals' Appreciation Week. Everyone is asked to reach out to the assistant principals that we have in the system and to thank them for the work that they do in our schools. It's that time of year again. Beth Duncan's looking for judges for the spring Senior Boards Night presentations at ACHS. As in the past, the Senior Boards Night presentations will be held on two nights. This year's presentations will be held on May 17th and May 18th. They're going to run roughly from 4:00 PM until 7:00 PM. Three to five judges are needed in each classroom. And each room's judges will be asked to actually grade nine presentations per night. And I would ask if you are willing to help either or both of those nights, to please let me know and I will notify Ms. Duncan. Dates for the high schools' honors ceremony and scholarship ceremony have been scheduled. Central office staff and school board members are invited to attend these special high school events. A formal invitation was at your place tonight when you came out. It was with your board agenda. And I would ask you to mark for the honors ceremony that's going to be held on Sunday, May 21st at three in the auditorium. And then the scholarship ceremony will be held on Friday, May 26th, beginning at 8:30 in the auditorium. The Special Olympics are scheduled for Friday, May 5th, beginning at nine at the Glenn G. Wilson Field at Cougar Stadium. All of you are invited and encouraged to attend. And then both Hidnite and Ellendale Elementary Schools have their leadership day scheduled. Please mark your calendar, May 12th at Ellendale from 8:30 until 11:00. And then May 19th at Hidnite Elementary from 9:00 to 11:30. Another big night, graduation is scheduled for Friday night, June 9th, beginning at seven at the high school stadium. And of course, you know that we'll, we'll have additional information about graduation to share with you a little closer to the date. Also, summer work hours for 11- and 12-month employees have, they've been scheduled. And they will begin the week of June 12th through the 16th and conclude the week of August 7th through the 11th. Employees will work four 10-hour days each week during that timeframe. And offices will be closed on Fridays. And I just want to take a minute to thank the board members that attended the school visit to Hidnite yesterday. I'm really proud to congratulate the Hidnite Elementary team for winning the 2017 RoboAlexander Champions Award. The RoboPhantoms Robotics Team will represent our county at the Western North Carolina Robotics Championship, being held at Bailey Middle School in Charlotte on April 29th. So, for those of you who were able to attend, I'm thinking that it was that extra practice session when they were showing you how to earn those points in the competition, maybe that did it for them. But they did end up winning the competition last night. Any questions from, from board members? All right, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Heffner. Now, we'll move to unfinished business. I'll now recognize Sharon McCaffey for the second reading of policy revisions.
We have ten policies tonight for the second reading. Support Services, 6,000. School Bus Idling, 6306. Organization of the Purchasing Function, 6410. Pre-audit Certification, 6421. State Purchasing Requirements for Equipment, Materials, and Supplies, 6430. Local Purchasing Requirement for Equipment, Materials, and Supplies, 6440. Vendor List, 6442. Purchase Services, 6450. And Network Security, 6524. And Disposal of Surplus Policy Property, 6560. These were given to the principals and the leadership staff to review. I had no comment and ask for your approval on second reading.
Board members, you've heard the second reading of the proposed policy revisions. What's the pleasure to board to return to a third reading in May? Or is there a motion to approve as presented on second reading? No, to approve. Is there a second? Second. Thank you. Any discussion? All those in favor of approving the second reading as presented, please say yea.
Yea.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
And we're new business. And Sharon, I think you're still up, so if you want to start with policies presented.
Okay. We have sixteen policies that are up for review in April for the first reading. Recruitment and selection of personnel, 7100. Licensor, 7130. Then the regulation that goes with that. Then drug alcohol testing of commercial motor vehicle operators, 7241. Employee use of social media, 7335. Extracurricular and non-instructional duties, 7405. School Administrator contracts, 7425. Substitute teachers, 7430. Workday and overtime, 7500. Workers' compensation, 7599. Employee political activities, 7720. Employee conflict of interest, 7730. Evaluation of licensed personnel, 7810. Plans for growth and improvement of licensed personnel, 7811. Personnel files, 7820. Reduction in force for teachers and school administrators, 7920. And these are up for, for first reading and they'll be presented to the principals and the school administrators.
These policies will be presented for a second reading in May. And if you'll continue with the new policy, Board of Education policy.
Okay. And we're down to the last two. These are new policies up for first reading. Return to work, and this is a regulation that goes with policy 7335. We split the policy out. And employee travel and other expense reimbursements, 7650.
And this will be a policy we'll review for a second reading in May also. Thank you so much. Dr. Bill Griffin will now present our agreement for the YMCA use of activity bus.
Vice Chair Bowman, members of the board, Dr. Heffner, bringing your attention, agreement for use of activity bus at Alexander County and the YMCA. In that document, you see that the YMCA is asking for permission to use our activity bus for day camping activities throughout the summer. That time would begin on June 12th, 17th through August 25th, 2017, at a cost of $1.25 per mile. The YMCA would also make sure that they hold the safety procedures and the PNS endorsement to drive any of the buses. And the fact that they would be at their own expense shall maintain liability insurance on the bus. And that during that time, that they would operate as a independently see or contractor of our school buses from that time. So, I asked for permission to grant them permission to use our activity buses for their day camps over the summer.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve the YMCA agreement as presented?
It's approved.
Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the YMCA use of activity bus agreement, please say yea.
Yea.
Any no's? Thank you. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Pursuant to North Carolina General Statute 143-318, the board will now enter into closed session for the purpose of discussing personnel. Is there a motion to enter closed session? No, no. Second. Any discussion? All in favor, please say yea.
Yea.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Good night.